Tom, if you'll lead us.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if the clerk would please take your roll.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
And Commissioner District Three, Terry Drexler.
Here.
Very good. Item number four, correspondence. If the clerk would please report the correspondence.
Washington State Department of Transportation sent a letter about options to improve traffic at the U.S. 101 Lynch Road intersection. Mason County prosecuting attorney sent a letter regarding the 2017 mid-year budget reductions. Chris Seizic sent a letter regarding the assessed value and increase in property taxes. And Christopher Drewie sent a letter on behalf of North Mason High School Band regarding becoming the musical ambassador for Mason County.
Very good. Thank you. Takes us to item number five, which is our open forum for citizen input. Remember, the public would like to come forward and address the commission on items not on tonight's agenda. They can do so at this time. Approach the podium, state their name, and the chair will recognize them.
Good old days. Good evening, commissioners. Tom Davis here, District Two resident. First, I want to thank you for having an evening meeting. It gives me the guilt-free pleasure of riding my motorcycle on a beautiful day without having to say where I'm going. So appreciate that. And I wanted to bring forth some opinion on what I call a cut-and-fill approach to saving money. We are right now in probably the, I believe it's the third phase of a cut-and-fill. And as you know, with developers, you cut-and-fill on a terrace, you cut so you can get a building site to build on on top, and then you fill below that. So you have multiple building sites. And the fill part is always the expensive part. The cutting is easy, the filling is expensive. And the reason for that, obviously, is you'd never have enough material to build a second building site. As this pertains to the cut-and-fill approach, and again, that's what I call it, to saving money, the same principle does apply. We've seen this happen back in, I believe it was 2009 or 2010, when Tim Sheldon led the charge to cut 100 county employees off the payroll. And then we wound up eventually hiring a bunch back. That happened again later on, somewhere in 2012, 2013. But it came in a little bit different way. What we did was we created the Department of Support Services, and we let go of some people who were filling positions, and we put those responsibilities onto people in new positions, and we paid them accordingly. And so that's been the subject of a lot of controversy, as you know, whether that, in the end, was not really promoted as a cost-saving measure, as I recall. It was promoted as an efficiency measure. And I had a hard time at the time getting my head around efficiency, not cost savings. It seems like those two should go hand in glove. So that's the way it was promoted. And to that extent, I assume it's been successful, or you wouldn't continue. But we have a situation now where we're about to embark on a road that I'm not sure was given enough thought. I appreciate, Commissioner Schutte, that you took a breath here before being the third ye vote on the budget. I can see that, to my opinion, that was wise. I would like to ask you to also, all of you, to take a breath before you let these folks go. Because historically, when we try to backfill these positions, which we inevitably will do at some point if we intend to grow at all, it's a lot more expensive to backfill than to keep the people that you have. Not only that, but also historically, what I've observed is that when you double up people's responsibility, you certainly don't double up their pay, but you do increase their pay, it doesn't necessarily mean that they work twice as hard. There's only eight hours in the day, they only do what they do, but they do assume the responsibility. But that doesn't necessarily mean they achieve the performance that's expected. What normally happens is people come back, and they say, hey, this is, you know, I took this position and so on, but in order to give you your performance level that you want, I'm going to need help. And then we start backfilling those positions. So it's popular, and a lot of people come in and sit in those seats, over the last nine, 10 years I've been watching, and the first approach is, let's cut and live within our means. I would suggest that you increase your means, and you increase, and you shift your focus radically from where it's been, as I alluded to the last meeting, to where the money actually is. And by that, I mean that we should be promoting this county as a hobby farm county for a people of means. We have an overabundance of people without means in this county. And we only have two choices. We can keep taxing them, because that's the only way you get the money, is you have to tax people in order to generate your revenues, or you can increase the tax base and tax people a little bit less. Because one thing's for sure, is your costs are always going to continue to rise. That's not in your purview, you have no control over that. No matter what you do, the cost of services will continue to rise. If you get your head around that, then you realize that the only way out of this is to increase your revenues. We're already going to have something on the agenda, to have a hearing for taxing people in a significant amount, which is, I assume, going to meet with quite a bit of resistance. And now we're going to cut to such an extent that there's also an item on what was being proposed by Mr. Pinter, that not only do you pay for services such as park maintenance, but now you're asking people to perform the same service. At some point, we have to say, maybe what we're doing is not the right approach. At some point, we need to look at growing this county and promoting this county in other than a business cycle, and in a residential growth cycle, to attract people of means. And we have all the potential and all the components between two sophisticated urban dwellings, Portland and Seattle, to accomplish this. And I think that's the only way out. In the meantime, on how to balance this budget right now, good luck. Thank you very much.
Hey, Tom? I've got a question for you. On, we've talked about this over the years several times. How would you, what does it look like to advertise to bring in people for hobby farms? What does that look like exactly? Because I've never been able to rent my...
Well, just for instance, I was born in 1946. I'm at the right cutting edge of the baby boomer generation. And as soon as we retired, we made our money somewhere else, and then we came here. And when we found this place, there was no doubt that we were going to move here. As soon as we saw it, this is what we're looking for, you've got 10 acres, you know, you've got everything you can't buy down in San Diego, and certainly not in New York City or anyplace else. So promoting this area is almost an automatic thing. What we've been doing is promoting, trying to attract business. And we've been doing that for the 13 years I've been here. And we haven't done it successfully enough, and the evidence of that is, we have less than $5 million in taxes, you know, for services and sales. And yet, I've watched the property taxes grow, almost $10 million, and I think it is more at this point, $10 million in the last six or seven years. In my business model, I go where the money is. I don't try to make something that is not naturally occurring. Our proximity to Olympia speaks volumes. People want to come here, you know, not for the jobs, obviously, but for the housing. But the people coming here right now are the people who are looking for bargains in houses. I'm not sure that's the people you want to ultimately attract. When you advertise for people and promote, like I did when I was in the biz, is you go to the people who have both the means and the desire, and it's the way you word your particular promotion, on what you are offering. In other words, we are offering here the dream that you think of when you retire. This is the place you've always dreamed of to be. You need to have a great deal of creativity when you're appealing to people's emotions. And that speaks to real estate, the world around. But we haven't even tried that. I brought this up at the EDC several years ago and was dumped like a hot rock, because people didn't have the mindset for that. What they were looking for was a business industrial center to create jobs here. With this county, from the moment Amy and I set foot in this county, this county has screamed to be either and a bedroom community for Olympia, which it was already, and then an upper-scale residential area. Just because you're rural, does not, poor and rural do not go together where I come from. Rural is always wealthy, or at least a people of means. You have something to offer naturally. It would be easier to get out of the way than to try to drive it in another direction. And this is a very long, it's a long conversation that we could have on this, because I've, you know, quite frankly, I've thought about it for quite a while. And it's probably not the proper venue here to do that. But I have some definite ideas, and if you'd like to hear them, I'm always willing to share them with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizen input? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number six, which is the adoption of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda as presented. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Item number seven, approval of minutes. We have minutes from the July 10, 2017 briefing, and then July 11, 2017 regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the minutes, July 10, 2017 briefing minutes, and July 11, 2017 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the July 10 briefing minutes and the July 11 regular meeting minutes. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Item number eight, the approval of tonight's action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on tonight's action agenda, at which time a citizen or commissioner can remove an item for a separate discussion and vote. If, I will read items 8.1 and 2. Commissioner Netherland, if you would please take items 8.3 and 4, and Commissioner Drexler, 8.5 and 8.6. Item 8.1, approval to appoint Jeff Bickford as a District Two representative to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for a three-year term. Item 8.2, approval to authorize Public Works to procure chip spreader equipment in the amount of $325,000.
Item number 8.3, Mr. Chairman, reads. Approval to appoint Jerry W. House as the acting county engineer for Mason County for a period not to exceed six months, beginning August 1, 2017. Item number 8.4, reads. Approval of warrants, claims, clearing fund warrants number 804-9853 through 8050023 for the amount $501.38.
Item 8.5, approval to award a construction contract for Sand Hill County Park renovations to Constrict Inc., and approval to have the chair sign on behalf of the county. Finally, 8.6, approval to set a public hearing on August 1, 2017, at 9:30 a.m., to take public comment on a proposed proposition increasing the regular property tax levy to a rate of $1.77 per $1,000 assessed value for collection in 2018. Increase the 2019 through 2023 levy amounts by the CPI inflation rate or 1%, whichever is higher, and authorize use of the 2023 levy amount as the base for computing levies in succeeding years.
Thank you, Chairman. May I see that? I don't have that in my book.
Oh, sure.
Can I borrow that for a second, please? Can we please remove item 8.6 for further discussion, please? Change that.
Okay. It's been moved that we are, recommended that we remove item 8.6 for a separate discussion and vote. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.5.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the action agenda, items 8.1 through 8.5.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve items 8.1 through 8.5. Is there any additional discussion?
I just want to thank Mr. House for stepping in as county engineer. We do have a, our current county engineer is moving on at the end of the, end of the month, I believe, 31st. And that leaves a void in that role, and I appreciate you stepping up to do that among your other duties.
Happy to.
I'd also like to thank Sarah for filling in while our county engineer was out of the office for several weeks. She did a fantastic job, and look forward to continuing to work with you as well. Thanks, Jerry. Appreciate that. Any additional discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Takes us to item 8.6, approval to set a public hearing on August 1, 2017, at 9 a.m., to take public comment on a proposed proposition increasing the regular property tax levy rate to a rate of $1.77 per $1,000 of assessed value for collection in 2018. Increase the 2019 through 2023 levy amounts by the CPI inflation rate or 1%, whichever is higher, and authorize use of the 2023 levy amount as the base for computing levies in succeeding years. Staff?
Thank you, commissioners. So at our briefing yesterday, we ran through a document in draft form to, for a resolution to be considered next Tuesday at the August 1 Commissioners' Meeting. And it was a lid lift resolution, which identified a tax rate of $1.77 per thousand for a multi-year lid lift proposition. This morning, I had the ability to have a conversation with the assessor's office, and the assessor identified the probability that the assessed values for Mason County properties will be higher than what the estimates I had put forward in that resolution. And what that would do is allow us to increase the dollar amount of the lid lift in the first year, but still at $1.77 per thousand. So one of the things that I would propose, since this is a draft of a document that we will re-brief on Monday, is that the $1.77 still remain the same, but that we can eliminate the five-years' worth of CPI increases, because we'll be able to collect that upfront in the first year. But that's a conversation for the commissioners to make, and a decision for the commission to make. So we'll have that briefing on Monday with a modification, or a final version of the resolution for adoption, and public hearing on Tuesday.
So Frank, are you recommending that we amend item 8.6 to reflect the removal of the CPI?
And that's not a decision that the commission has made at this point. The decision the commission made was, was in the, not a decision, but the draft document that we had on Monday is what's in the document today. Next Monday, when we review that draft document, if the decision is made to modify it, then we can make a modification for the hearing on Tuesday.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Can you tell us what the new estimate would be for that?
About $3.4 million.
$3.4, as opposed to $2.7?
$2.7.
$2.7. Discussed.
So, may I?
So, this is not a formalization of the proposition. This is a notification of a hearing to discuss a draft document that the commission can vote on.
And can we change it to that?
You can change it at either on Monday during a briefing, or on Tuesday as a part of your deliberations on the resolution.
But I meant for putting it up as a hearing.
If the commission wants to concur on changing it at this point, yes, you can.
Is there a notice about yesterday's publication?
It's already out, is that what you said?
Yes, publication's already out.
It's a tough one, because, you know, I'm not in favor of that one. But I am in favor of going out for a hearing, so we can discuss the options. And I won't stand in the way of that, so I will, I'll stand with it. Go ahead.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So I would then entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we set a public hearing on August 1, 2017, at 9:30 a.m., to take public comment on a proposed proposition increasing the regular property tax rate to a rate of $1.77 per $1,000 assessed value for collection in 2018. Increase the 2019 through 2023 levy amounts by the CPI inflation rate or 1%, whichever is higher, and authorize use of the 2023 levy amount as the base for computing levies in succeeding years.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve setting a public hearing on August 1, 2017, at 9:30 a.m., to take public comment on a proposed proposition increasing the regular property tax levy to a rate of $1.77 per $1,000 of assessed value for collection in 2018. Increase the 2019 through 2023 levy amounts by the CPI inflation rate or 1%, whichever is higher, and authorize use of the 2023 levy amount as the best, as the base for computing levies in succeeding years. Is there any additional discussion?
Chairman, I need to clarify, though, because the way that motion is made, it's very specific in what will be at that hearing. Are you positive we have the leeway to?
There's no public hearing required as a function of the lid lift process. So the notice to call a public hearing is a courtesy to the citizens to allow them to participate in the conversation. The commission can draft the resolution and make any modification to it at that hearing.
Because this is a, and that will, hearing, not a mandatory, so...
Correct.
Okay. That's all I needed.
And then just clarification that this hearing, the action will be not to raise the taxes, but to put that question to the voters.
Correct. It would be to draft a resolution that would go to the auditor's office, which would then be used as the basis upon which a proposition would be drafted to go to the election on November, the general election in November.
And the language on the ballot is written by our prosecutor, is that correct?
Generally, yes. There is a proposed language in the draft resolution, but that is generally then drafted by our prosecutor or deputy prosecutor, as in the relationship between the August 1 date and the publication of the ballot pamphlet.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Takes us to item number nine, other businesses, opportunity for department heads and elected officials to address the commission. Any department heads? If you can come forward now, please do. Okay. Seeing none, item 10, there are no public hearings for this evening, so we can move on to item number 11, which is our board reports and calendar. I'll get us started if Commissioner Drexler would follow, and then Commissioner Netherland. Last week, I spent the second half of the week attending the county's risk pool, annual, one of their board meetings, on behalf of the county, and doing that work and getting updates on where we stand in terms of going forward with rates for next year, as well as hearing from other counties and the issues that they're facing, and steps that they're taking to mitigate some of their exposure and liability, which I can tell you is very therapeutic, to hear what other counties are going through as well. So there are some very interesting discussions, and so it was a positive meeting last week. For the remainder of this week, I have constituent meetings. Tomorrow, I'll also be meeting with Representative McEwen to talk about legislative session and the Hearst indecision, shall we say, that was a result of 193 days in session this year, as well as the capital budget. We had some requests in the capital budget, which did not get passed this year, so I'll be getting an update from him tomorrow. Also be attending the North Mason Chamber lunch out at Alderbrook. Have the Alliance for a Healthy South sound this week, sheriff's breakfast, and then also the Little League World Series will be in town this weekend. So I hope everybody takes an opportunity to get out and watch some baseball. Be welcoming teams from across the country. And then we'll be back for briefings and our commission meeting next week.
Thank you. Following last week's commission meeting, we did have a finance committee meeting and a Mason Transit Authority Board meeting. That Wednesday, I attended the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. There were a number of items that I was very interested in, most definitely wanting to hear some of the reporting back requirements and results of the lodging tax, which the law has those numbers, and we collect them from all of our spenders of our lodging tax monies. And there was some interesting discussion around that, but not a lot of information. And then I wanted to congratulate and just announce that I did attend the Shelton Mason Chamber of Commerce Business Expo and Bite of Shelton. That was a tremendous event. They had more booths than they've ever had. I love the fact that they're in a downtown location outside, so that people can walk among businesses as well. And I want to congratulate them. We had the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization meeting here in Mason County that Thursday. I had the opportunity to sit down with Como News and discuss our budget cuts on Friday, and that aired Friday, and it's available on their website, if anybody would like to see. We had our briefings yesterday. And then I got to attend and speak at a ribbon-cutting for our newest behavioral health provider, Consejo, who are especially appreciated in this community, in that they are home-based, they will go to folks' homes, they will meet them wherever they can for their care, they try to take as many barriers away. And one of the most significant ones as well is that they're bicultural and bilingual. And so I welcome Consejo, and I'm very thankful that they're here in the community. We had our Board of Health meeting this morning, or this afternoon, and then tomorrow I will be meeting with staff, and then the Community Action Council meeting, the Board meeting. Our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will review the request for proposals on tourism marketing and visitor information services. Our Area Agency and Aging meeting was canceled. I'm going to be sitting in on the Mason Housing Authority Work Session on Friday, the 28th, to discuss some of the future ideas they have for some of their assets. And then I'll have a meeting of the Civic Mountain Consortium, Workforce Development Council, the Consortium of Governments. And that brings us back then to Monday, briefings.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll start off with a thank you for attending Risk Pool on my behalf. That was supposed to be mine, but it turned out that at the last minute, I added a reminder that it was also my anniversary. And luckily, the reminder was in time, and I did not get into too much trouble. So thank you very much for stepping up. And I appreciate that you went to the Consejo event, because you came back with M&amp;Ms for all of us, and I very much appreciate it. I met with Nicholas Carr and the different, some different federal agencies and state agencies in Olympia in regards to the sewer, our debts, our issues, and our potential needs for how to get out of the problems we're at, but how to expand into perhaps Kitsap or the Phase 2 area, or all of the above, or none. So it was wonderful that they put that together, and he just texted me the other day saying that he's working on putting some more things together for us. Very much appreciate Derek Kilmer and his staff for doing all that. We had our Finance Committee meeting, Mason Transit Authority meeting, of which the vote was taken on the purchase of land up in Belfair. There's going to be an investment in a parking lot up there in that area. And actually, when they did the one here in Shelton, it became a downtown revitalization project. For our little community, it will make a difference, just having that up there, because the infrastructure will come there. And when the infrastructure's there, I know they're already looking at retail, and other developers utilizing the land that's over and around it. So in its own way, but we're only focusing on a parking lot, but because of it, there's going to be a lot of benefits that come. So a lot of, a lot of thank yous to go around from North Mason for that. North Mason Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, I met with our prosecuting attorney and the deputy prosecuting attorney to go over different things in regards to the budget, in regards to where monies can come from, how they can be used, what powers and authorities the commission has, and any other ideas that they may have. I met afterwards with Frank to come over and pass on some of those same issues and to talk over some different ideas we may have for revenue generation. I like, Stan Young was putting together something for the going-away party of Patty Kleist. I gave him your name, too. I don't know if you ever contacted, but they were going to ask if you wanted to do a little video for her, saying goodbye. So that'll be up to you guys, how you handle that. We had our briefings. I attended something really cool last night. There was a thank you, I don't know if you want to call it a dinner or gathering, from Bremerton thanking the Mason County road crew. I got to tell you, it was pretty cool. I went there to that. Wonderful, the mayor was there. Wonderful, the mayor was there with arms wide open, very thankful for what Mason County had done. And we were there to express our appreciation for all they did for us, because people don't know it, but they jumped in to help us with a lot of our sewer issues when we were lacking the people to actually do the job. There was a relationship that our director had already put together with them and so we've had some mutual helping each other out. Our crews went out there and helped them with some of their chip ship seal problems and it was just wonderful watching everybody work together and, and eat together. And it was after work, they were having a few cocktails, too. It was pretty interesting to, to watch, but I was awful proud of our people. And if you were watching them, how they were hanging out together and talking together, I hope we do more that way. I hope we end up with more communication with our, our own incorporated city here because we could be helping them with some of their roads as well if they wanted to work with us. So, but it was just a great event, so thank you for inviting me to that and putting that together. North Mason Community Voice meeting, then we had our Board of Health meeting. I will also be trying to attend, but it's not the Little League World Series, it is...
Pee Wee Reese.
Pee Wee Reese World Series. If we are there together, most we'll do is, is probably go up and get a hot dog together at the same time. So no issues, no business. North Mason Chamber of Commerce luncheon. I'll be meeting with the state auditor representative about issues, they'd like to know what I think about in the county and some ideas that I may have to deal with that. I will be the guest speaker. Kitsap Alliance of Property Owners, we have, I have a West Sound Alliance conference call and gathering with that brings us back to our briefing and our, our left board meeting the morning of our Commission meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Takes us to item number 12, which is adjournment. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
We're adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.